Oh, just like a recording in progress. Okay.
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Hold on. Got it. All right. So unfortunately, I'm not as good looking as James Mann is, but here we go. So birthdays, we have Chris Logan, August 26, Iainah Hidas, August 29, Shelley Roddiker, August 31, Will Ward, September 1, spouses birthdays, Bill Connor's spouse Donna, August 28, Brian Ewen's spouse Kelly, August 28, Galen and Gregor's spouse Marine 20, Marine, August 29. Oh, 28, okay. Anniversary is Will and Frida Button, 17 years, August 26, Ray and Beth Button, 26 years, August 31, club anniversary Scott, 12 years, Jim, 33 years, Tim, 32 years, and Tom, 36 years. Holy smokes, that's a lot of years. 130, 113 combined rotary years in service. Salute. Good job. Man, you gotta ask me to bring my glass? All right. If you are a visitor or a guest, we'd ask you to stand up and Galen is gonna be making the rounds. We have got some fabulous visitors with us today, guests. Go ahead and stand up so he can find you.
All right. Oh, that's fun.
Hello, my name is Belinda Burison. I work for Georgetown ISD in the Communication and Engagement Office. Happy to be here.
And I'm Sarah Mimi, I'm the counselor in the department. I'm Mrs. Tom. So thank you for having me.
Yeah, we had a few. We got lots scattered out.
Oh. You look nice. I could ask them to introduce prospective members, Daniel McDonald, CBA, seventh generation Texan, the proud father of two daughters, and he is in April Grove. Welcome, Daniel McDonald.
Galen's getting his steps in, guys. Don't, don't direct him. He's got it.
Anyway, hello everybody. I am very excited to introduce these two wonderful people. First of all, who we've all heard, Garrett Mills, that's been purchased by Bolero. This is our new general manager, Mills. And Jacob is one of the regional managers. So please welcome them both and then join in.
This is my son, Gabriel Aitken, a machine gunner in the United States Marine Corps Reserve, and a senior bases. Anybody?
We're very, very glad to have everybody with us. Thank you for making the time. We are the best Rotary Club in Georgetown. So this is amazing. We're glad to be here. Okay, recognitions and announcements. Boy, I tell you what, as you're gonna see, we are not a club for the faint of heart. I believe what I said in one of my last sentences of my president's message this week. Our club does more in two hours than most clubs do in two years. And that's something to be very proud of, and that is why our programs are so full and our energy is so robust. And it takes a very excited group to do this. So wanted to just give you a quick look back on some of the fun and what's coming down the pipe. Do you know how hard it was to put all the pictures from just last Friday on a slide? I mean, holy cow. Not only were we awarded a beautiful peace building distinguished club that, remember, only 400 other clubs worldwide hold that distinction with us. Ooh, that's right. That's a big deal. We had somebody from Wells presented to us via Zoom. We also awarded a wonderful check to a great organization with Helping Hands who fed a lot of kiddos over the weekends this summer. We welcome back Mike Hewlett to the podium. We had not had the Hewlts with us here for a couple of years. And how exciting was it to have Mike? His dad was a staple at this club for so many years and to have Barbie join us and their support continuing is wonderful. You say all that and then you go, and the district governor was here. You know, normally you're like, that's it. And thank you to Steve Dool. We had five district governors in the house, past district governors. He had forgotten to count himself, but not very many clubs get to hold that kind of status on a Friday afternoon. And not only that, we fed 800 kids. Woo. And I, I just, I cannot tell you how proud I am that you all hung for that. They came to me and they said, it's 1 o'clock. We're only halfway done. I said, this club isn't a halfway club. We're gonna finish. They're like, oh, should we let people know? I said, no, don't, don't even tell them it's 1 o'clock. They'll look down when we're done and we'll, we'll roll out. But that, that sentiment is true, right? You echo that with me. We're not a halfway club. We're a all-in club. And that is something that we should be very proud of. And I, we're gonna get a little bit of your feedback on that here in a minute. So we'll go to the next slide, Ken. Just a quick reminder about the upcoming trip to India. Todd is online, but the spots are filling up. So that's a chance to see India, deliver polio vaccines, and have a wonderful Rotary Fellowship. Wonderful way to celebrate the new year. I bet they have a heck of a good party over there. Speaking of parties, I am not a good poker player. However, if I had a chance to win a 50-50 pot, I could probably bluff myself into some bad hands and I might make a little bit of money. They're being wonderful to us over at the Poker Club. This is a, I think this is the second or third annual that they've done this, where they allow the Field of Honor to be the beneficiary from this Help a Hero Poker Tournament. So September 4th, Labor Day weekend, head on over there. You don't have to pre-register. You can just show up and there's flyers on the table. There's, if you are part of the 60th Club Anniversary Committee, would you please stand for just a quick moment? All of our past presidents that have been hanging around and committee members, would you guys please give them a round of applause for me? They are, listen, the, the email that I got and the workflow chart that I got made me look like I am not doing a very good job as president. Amount of detail that's in that chart. It is not for the faint of heart. Couple of things we do want to make sure get on your agenda. Our club birthday celebration is gonna be on October 21st, and that is for us as a club, and that'll start at 11:00. So we're gonna start even earlier. We're gonna be 11 to 1, because it's our 60th party. We got a lot to celebrate. Then, on December 15th, for our final meeting before Christmas, 14th. Okay, well, we'll update the Google Sheet. On the 14th, for our final meeting of December, we will be hosting a community celebration and inviting all the wonderful nonprofits and groups we have partnered with over these last 60 years to join us for an end of 60th celebration, full of history and collecting how many dollars we've cumulatively given. This is a big undertaking to take on. It's something we should be very proud of. So please pay close attention as these dates and invitations begin to come around. And it's event season. And a couple of event notes. We've got a growing list of Rotarians who their businesses or personally are stepping up to be sponsors. And I think each and every one of the folks on this list, many of you are here, some of you are on Zoom. We would not be successful in that sense. Additional update, we've had a lot of questions about shirts. As you can see, I have got men's shirts on my right, ladies shirts on my left. And if you just would like a lady shirt and you're a gentleman, by all means, you may pick whichever shirt you would like. That is okay. However, there are order forms on your table. So if you're inclined and you would like an updated shirt with the updated Field of Honor logo and Rotary logo, then please go ahead and take care of that. So we can get that order put in. As you know, supply chains are supply chains, and we want to make sure we get that in timely. So you can leave that with Jeannie or Meyer at the end of the meeting, so we can get all that processed. And thank you very much for the Field of Honor Committee to getting those together for us. And tonight, we're gonna party. Hey, that's worth celebrating. Nobody's gonna come. Okay, Karen, it's gonna be you and me. We need a table for two. And Vanessa, okay, raise your hand if you're gonna join us at Hartel's tonight for an amazing Rotary Social. Let's beat our crowd that we had at Wrench. Head on over there around 5:30. Look for the crew that's having the most fun, and you will find your Rotary Club. Vanessa says get there at 5:00. This is why we are a club of doers. Okay. And Jeff is running around. I don't know if he's quite ready, but we do have barbecue tickets and, as I said, shirt order form. So please go ahead and get those things taken care of. Barbecue's gonna sell out quick. So we're opening it to club members and your spouses and others here for the next two or three weeks before we take it to everywhere else, because we don't want anybody to not be able to get a ticket. Space is limited. Okay. Dennis, got a quick minute for us? Dennis Brown, membership chair, coming to the podium. Let's give him a warm welcome, everybody.
Thank you, Kat. Today, we were supposed to have Glenn Snyder do his classification talk. Unfortunately, Glenn's under the weather, so we've rescheduled him for September 9th. So we'll look forward to that. Daniel, who was introduced, and Haley, who was here last week and this week, both of them have membership forms. And so I'm expecting that we'll see both of them in the near future as members of the Georgetown Rotary Club. So today, just quickly, goal number three, I've done goal number one and two. This is the eight goals for the Membership Committee. So goal number three, sponsors become more actively engaged with new members. And many of you have been sponsors. Some of you, we look forward to you being sponsors in the future. What are we gonna do to get them more actively engaged? You saw that they participated in the induction ceremony, help new members to stay engaged with Rotary. They'll be involved in the red badge to white badge, and you saw that when we did that just a few weeks ago. Help them get involved with service projects. Committee participation, a lot of committees that we have need participants. And so as a sponsor, we'd ask you to help get them connected with a committee of their choice. So those are the action plans for goal number three, and over the next month or two, I'll give you the other goals. So as I close, words to live by. The people who are crazy enough to think that they can change the world are the ones who usually do. Steve Jones, thank you.
All right. Mr. Galen, how you been, sir?
Fine. I'm fine. My turn.
It is your turn. Please.
Meetings have been worth the vision for me.
Oh. Oh.
I'm gonna talk about revision and law. Okay, everybody. There's gonna be a conference afterwards. By applause, who wants the best story? Okay. There's this guy sitting at a bar, and this screwdriver walked in and popped in the chair next to me. And he's saying, I got to leave the coffee, the screwdriver, working on a clock box. So I reached, leaned over the top of the screwdriver and said, you know, the man who made a great after you? And the screwdriver said, oh. I mean, those. I was gonna talk about revision and laws. You know, sports, it's always, you know, it's always a good combination. I know when I play golf, I'm on the playing field. I'm always asking God for help. I'd like to break revision in. But anyway, this little story about a friend of mine named Brian. Brian loved to play golf as a young man. He's about 15 years old. He loved to play golf. And he was on vacation alone with his family. And he got an opportunity to meet the Pope. And when he came with the Pope, which he regarded as a guru, he said, Your Eminence, can I ask you a question? And he says, Well, sure. He said, Is there a golf course in heaven? I really need to know. And I went to the Pope and said, Well, the Pope said, You know, I don't know. But I'll tell you what, I'll talk to God tonight and ask him about your question. I will meet tomorrow. So Brian meets Pope tomorrow. He said, Well, what did God say to you? He said, Well, you know, there's good news and there's bad news. God said that the golf courses in heaven are beautiful. They're magnificent. The bad news, you have a tea time tomorrow morning. I was trying to come up with a story about the Pope. And I couldn't get my mind out of it. So I think.
Oh.
All right. I don't think it's important to follow plus project. And I'm sure there must be some folks that wants to partner with Happy Boys. Who can help support that project.
Dennis, behind you.
Do we have some happy people who?
Who's, who's this guy?
Mr. Dennis. ISD. As most of you know, I spent the last 123 weeks in Canada, and I've got some donations for various events that happened. We took seven flights going there and back and in the country. It's a lot of flights. Not an issue on any one flight. My wife was spending a period at the page, would never show up. Seven flights, jet, two bags. All ocean. It was, so I got $7 and seven flights. I got seven all free to the bay. Pretty much.
Welcome back. Welcome back.
Well, I'm honored to be here today. My very first grandson has been reborn on September 1st. So I gave $20 for my grandson. Very happy. Well, it's happy. We'll be happy to buy you a bar.
Well, and Tom's always, Tom's always happy. Now, listen, you're gonna go back there. You're gonna give the mic to Tom. I want to remind you, Tom is the reason I'm wearing two name tags today, because he told me I was fined for not having my name tag on. And I'm happy to help with a little bit of the preservation Georgetown stuff, and I do owe him a phone call. So for my failure to properly talk to Tom, go ahead and give 10 bucks for me for dropping the ball. Yes. And then you can give him the mic, so he won't make fun of me when he starts talking. I, I beat him to it.
Well, if he's trying to make fun of my costume.
There we go. Even better.
I'm here promoting preservation Georgetown for 25 bucks. It's 30 bucks. And teach Georgetown historic. And if you like what you see here and you want to support, you know, pull out your wallet and pay 35 bucks. And if you can't afford it, too cheap, I feel like so. Maybe they have, and Dennis said they will need to stop it. Really just pay it more than the bucks.
Okay, very good. Oh, and Derek, and then right over, Galen, right behind you, Mr. Derek. There we go.
Oh, there you go. Yes. You must be happy. We're just here to expose things. Yeah, I guess we'll do early happy boxes as well for the free members. Do you have the space?
All right.
Does anybody, anyone who wants wine?
I like the way you guys do happy butts. I'm a member of the San Jose Police Department. We only go with cash and $2.00. So I'm gonna drink the pot. I just want to give a shout out to our public safety officers in the San Jose Georgetown. If anybody in here has worked in public safety at any point in your career, I know we've got one person back there. I'd like you guys to stand up for just a minute, and I want to say thank you in the moment that we're in right now with just violence in our country. There is a lot of it, and school safety is something that's really a top priority for us. If you haven't heard the names yet, our school resource officers in Georgetown ISD were recognized yesterday by the Georgetown Chamber with the cornerstone award on public safety. I'm just so incredibly proud of them. And knowing what they do, I think every day. So if you know any of those folks, please come on over to me.
Thank you. So if you got anything else you'd like to keep them.
And even if, if you don't want to share, we have time. If one, if anybody would like to share just a quick, you got about one minute of, if, if last week was really special and you just want to share that with the room. Oh, right there. Wow, welcome. Yes, this, okay, this, this team, that we were here till 1:40. They loaded all of those boxes, and they're not even members of our Rotary Club yet. So.
You know, I've traveled quite a few different places these days, rocked up in various locations, went to some various other places. That's the biggest one I've ever seen. I've done some, you know, we put bags together, churches, food bags, different things. And to come in and be a part of it in like 40 minutes with that many angels, we're gonna go out and it's next up for me again. That was cool. And for us, right now, we're kind of in this state of woodworking, just top to bottom, open to close. We haven't been ready when it takes over next week. And they kind of have a quick rest and come do something fun that matters. We had a good time. We were dancing. We were all fun. We appreciate you guys welcoming us in. And that was an awesome way to kind of kick off our weekend event. So thank you. I want to say thank you to the new. If you didn't realize last week that we need to pay around with a bag full of sub, there were three people that were trying to tie the ball off, it's like, nah. This gentleman before that and never looked up. Thank you. Thank you.
So what I would say is if you had fun today, then that means you enjoy service and you want to join the service committee, the Service Products Committee. So if you're interested in helping us plan more fun events like that or happen in the club and out in the community, please see me afterwards and join us.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Galen. Let's give, yeah, let's give Galen a round of applause. Thank you for a great Sergeant at Arms minute. All right, Mr. Ken. And it is my absolute pleasure to invite Mr. Tom Horton to the podium today. And he is a Rotarian, but if you don't know Tom, Tom is to mentoring is to what Ron is to peace. They are just, he is on fire for this, and we love his passion and we love his excitement about this. And Tom, I'm very much looking forward to your program. Thank you for coming today. We appreciate you. Let's welcome Tom. Did I get it tied in?
Yes. Few adjustments here. Thank you, Kat. As most of you may know, we now have a mentoring committee here at our club. And that's terrific. I'm gonna talk to you about what that means today. Our goal is to promote mentoring in Georgetown ISD and beyond. I don't see any upward limit on this at all. To let you know a little bit about how I got started. About 30 years ago, I got a call from a client who worked at a principal's office. Her name was Dana Rockpe. The data said, Tom, we got this boy who just has to have mentor. Would you please do it? The only reason I said yes is because I didn't have the heart to say no. And once I said yes, I thought, what have I done? What am I gonna do with this kid? I don't know. To do. But I went, and the first meeting went well. And the second meeting was better. And by the third meeting, I was hooked. I thought, I'll do this the rest of my life. But there's really four things I want you to know about mentoring that are really important. It's easy. It's fun. It's important. And in Georgetown, you do it by signing up at georgetownisd.org/beingmentor. There are flyers on all the tables that have that address on there for you. That's really all you need to know. We did a Zoom meeting back in January, and I talked about mentoring, but mostly I was listening because I wanted to know what the objections were to mentoring. What I found out was, first of all, people just didn't know about it. And second, they have a lot of misconceptions. Even when I met with Kat, I mean, I discovered people seem to try to make it a lot harder than it is. So we're gonna clear up a few of those things today. There are other ways to mentor, many ways to volunteer in Georgetown ISD. And all of those are great, but what we're gonna be talking about today is spending one-on-one time with a child. Slide. When you are a mentor, you are above all else a friend. That child wants a friend. You are a robot. When the first child I mentored, when he found out that I was own my own business, he said, you're the boss? Yeah. Does your wife know? Said, well, yes. She must be very proud. In his mind, being associated with somebody that owned a business just wasn't possible. It opens up their mind. You're a confidant. You build a trust relationship with a child. And you hopefully have a positive impact in the child's life. That's your thing. Here's things you're not. You are not a family member. You do not associate with their family. You don't contact their family. You spend time with that child at school. You are not a social worker or doctor. Something comes up, the child confides in you. That's great. You let the counselor know. You turn it over to the professionals. And you are not a savior. These kids have a lot of problems in their lives. You're not gonna fix them. But you can fix one of the most important ones, and that's having somebody they can call a friend and they can trust. Now, why mentor? Slide, please. It's easy. The system is already in place. There are no meetings. You're not contacting anyone. It's free. You don't raise any money. There are no reports to file. You just spend time with a kid. In most jobs, I say, oh, you know, it's 30 minutes a week. What, Kat, is your job an hour a week for your Rotary? We're mentoring. It is 30 minutes a week. That's it. And these kids are incredibly well behaved because they just can't wait for you to be there. I've never once had any child do anything to get out of. It's fun. You talk and you play with a kid. That's it. I love it, because I never really grew up. I get to go be a kid every week. That's my wife. Wednesday, I just couldn't wait to get there. And it's important. It's incredibly important. When I asked Sarah one time, I said, how many kids in Georgetown ISD could use a mentor? I said, realistically, I said, really? She said, yes, all. Because they get the undivided attention of an adult for 30 minutes a week. And that's huge. They have somebody in their life that they can trust. Slide. I'm an 80/20 guy. I want 80% of the results for 20% of the work. When I go there, I, I don't even feel like I'm. When I go there, I don't even feel like I'm giving anything. Just like a penny. It's nothing. There is no work. Slide. But I have to remind myself that for them, it's everything. It's this treasure. And I think about when I'm with them, I think just being with them is the most important thing I can do with this kid. Now, we're going to have a little breakout session. Little friendly competition. There's a sheet on the tables. On the first row, you're going to talk about things that you can do with a kid when you're mentoring. The next row, you're going to talk about things you can talk about. And the third row, maybe some values that you could pass on to a child. So, y'all break out. We have a few minutes. Have some fun. See who can win the competition.
Which one do you all want to do? We can, I'll record in chat.
Like, row two and row three.
Let's, let's go with row two. And I'll kind of record and chat what, what things come up.
I think one of the things, you know, I have mentored high school students as well. And one of the things I pass on to them is my, how I make my decisions. What's my process for decision-making? And what are my values? You know, a lot of kids, they find out I'm an engineer and they go, "Oh, you must make a lot of money." And I go, "No, I don't do engineering because I wanted to make, you know, a lot of money." Money is like number five to 10 on my bucket list of why I do what I do. That blows their mind.
That's great, Joe. Thank you. Anybody else? You don't, if you haven't been a mentor, that's fine too. Just share some thoughts, some ideas.
I know in Houston, when I did it with the HISD there, they wanted us as police officers. So, we met with these kids in the school. Each, each school chose the kids that were going to be in this program. So, it wasn't like the kids had any choice about it at all. They were selected based on a number of criteria. But they, the people that they chose are the ones that were most at risk to have negative interaction with the police at some point, or if they, or they've already had it. So, a lot of their parents, at least one, had been incarcerated or was currently incarcerated and that sort of thing. So, and the other thing too is that I was the only white police officer involved in this. The, everybody else that was on this program with me were all minorities. But we all went and we spent at least an hour a week with a group of kids and we actually enjoyed it. We, we had a really good time with it. And as long as I had been there, I did it four years. There was only one kid that I can remember that was removed from the program until the HSD Board of Directors decided they didn't want the program at all, and then they just disbanded it. So, but I thought it was pretty good, pretty good program. And Gene, you brought up a really good affirmation in that, I mean, you really don't know how you're going to affect a kid. Or if, I mean, it's amazing to me to find out. I mean, if we think about it in our own lives, there's always somebody in our life that we can look back and say.
Yeah, hate to interrupt, but we're going to, we're going to need to move on because I want to make sure we save plenty of time for questions at the end of the program. I'm going to start over here. Kat, how many did y'all come up with? 10, okay? Sarah? Hey? Mike? We're going to do the front row first. Mike? How many y'all come up with? Okay? Okay? All right, okay. Okay. Win. Okay. How many? Five? Okay? Ron? Barbara? Well, excellent. Yes. Okay, I think you overthought it. Yes. Again, that's part, that's part of, part of what I want to talk about is just people overthinking it. They're just a kid. Okay? Yes, how many? Okay, so you, so 12. You win with 12. Okay, back table over here? 13. Excellent. Yes. Yes. Sam? Okay. Tom, Tom, Tom Paxton. How many, how many did your table come up with? Eight? Eleven. Okay. Wiley, how many y'all? Seven. Okay. For those of you coming, coming up to talk about mentoring, come on up right now. I'm going to have some of the other people in our club have mentored them and speak to you for a little bit. You can, you can really see how easy it is and you have three minutes. How many ideas you could come up with in three minutes? Okay? George, why don't you just tell us about your experience with it?
You know, I can relate to all that Tom has talked about. When I first got talked into becoming a mentor, I'm thinking, I have no idea what I'm going to do. And when he said it's easy, it really is. You're just having a conversation with a kid. You might play basketball or whatever, like football. Walk over a walk. It's just an easy conversation with a kid. That's the most amazing thing in the world. And it really makes a difference. So, there's an individual, his name is Colin, who I've mentored for many years. And he still keeps in touch. It's a long-term relationship.
Thank you. Thank you, George. Jim, come on up.
On Monday, I'll start my fourth year. The first year, I had a fifth grader and I was going to follow him to middle school, but his family left town. So, I started with a young man named Tason. And Monday will, I will start my third year with Tason. The first year, we got along great. He, we played Uno and neither one of us knew how to play, so we learned together. And what blew me away was along around March, he said, "Can I learn chess?" And I'm not good at it, but I've played a lot of chess in my life. I said, "Sure." So, every day, I mean, every Monday, I'll take my chess set and we have lunch. And by the way, the food is really good at Cooper Elementary. I can't speak for Carter. And we get lunch and cookies. And the first year, I built trust. And the second year, it broke, it didn't break my heart, but it made me, it made me cry. Because every time he sees me now on Monday, he runs and he grabs me. That, that makes it all worthwhile.
Thank you, Jim.
So, I'll share just a quick little story. I sort of reminded me Sean in third grade at Old McCoy. Went through elementary school, started middle school at Benal, seventh grade, was at Forbes. Everything's rocking along good. You know, I was with him for four or five years. I show up and he's not there, which was unusual. So, I circle by the office and they said, "Well, Sean's checked out, moved out of the district." And I thought, well, that's that, you know. So, fast forward about six or seven years. So, a couple of years ago, through the beauty of social media, he reached out to me. So, we kind of reconnected and I keep in contact with him that way. But it just shows that you do make an impression on these kids over long term and they do remember you. So, and it's an easy, like I said, it's an easy thing to do. So, think about it and sign up.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. So, you see, it's not just me. Next slide, please. This next slide. But wanted to tell you about another experience that I have. I also teach Bible lessons at the Juvenile Detention Center. I've done that for the last 25 years. I do it once a month. And when I go there, it's a completely different feeling than when I'm mentoring. I go to the detention center for really one, I keep one thing in mind. I've got nothing to lose. These are kids are 15 to 17 years old. Their behavior patterns are pretty well entrenched. I have no idea if I'm getting through them or not. But I have nothing to lose. When I mentor an elementary child, I know I'm having a difference. I can see it. It's right there in front of me. And I think about it like, if I'm going to change the course of something, it's much easier to change the course of a stream than elementary child than it is a river, a more established, an older kid. So, it's, it's more important to get that relationship with them when they're younger. You can see from what Wiley said last, George. Next slide. You're going to wonder why I have pictures of Theodore Roosevelt and Napoleon on the screen. If you understand, if you know about them, you know they are incredibly similar. Their personalities were almost identical. They're, they were charismatic, ambitious, high-energy leaders that people follow. Napoleon translated that into being the dictator of France. And his wars killed over three million, three million people. Teddy Roosevelt became the youngest president of the United States. The only person in history to win the Nobel Peace Prize and the Congressional Medal of Honor. He established the National Park System. He dug the Panama Canal. And I could go on and on. Next slide. What's the difference? This guy. Theodore Roosevelt Senior. Napoleon's dad was pretty much a goofball. But Theodore Senior was in his child's ear from the time he was young, saying, "Virtue is important." Position and power are important. You use those things for the good of everyone. It's not just for you. The message he was sending was, "It's not about you." And what happened? Slide. Besides all the things that Teddy Roosevelt did, he was a giant impact on Theodore, I mean, on FDR and on Eleanor Roosevelt. They all wanted to live up to him. And all the things that they did. Now, Theodore, Theodore Senior died when he was, his son was in college. He never got to see what Teddy became. He never got to understand the influence that he had. When I mentor and hopefully get more mentors, I'll never know the influence that I have. That's okay. Because I'm having fun. Now, the last slide I'm going to show is a video clip that best demonstrates how I feel about mentoring and what I, what it means and what I think about it. So, go ahead with the last slide. I'm sorry, we got a little, that was, it's okay. Can we get back to that or? Anyway. Okay. Thank you. We are arguably maybe the most important service organization in the largest growing city in America for our size. We can make a difference. I'm going to have fun the rest of the time doing this. On your table is a sheet. If you're interested in all of mentoring, if you put your name on there, maybe your email address, somebody from our committee will contact you just to help guide you through the process of getting registered. And so, we can maybe monitor a little bit about how things are going for you and give Melinda feedback because we're going to be partnering with the school district to make sure to give them the mentor's perspective of what this means. Now, I'm open for questions.
How old, how old are most of the kids that they started out?
Most of the kids I've started out with are first or second grade. The last one I started out with was a fourth grader, but Ellen mentioned, you could ask for an older child if you wanted to. But most of them are going to be elementary for probably first or second grade.
Just a comment. Not only do I get to meet a kid, I also get to meet a lot of teachers. And you would be so proud of the teachers that we have at Georgetown Independent School District. They are all totally committed, at least the ones I've met. And I will also tell you that they are under incredible pressure at this moment. One of my favorite teachers, Annie Graham, who teaches chemistry at A C U. She said, you know, a year and a half ago, I was a hero and now I'm a goat. And we owe it to our teachers to let them know how much we appreciate them. Thank you.
Just, we, we, excuse me, we have resources. Sarah's counselor and Melinda knows the administrative side. So, if you have any questions at all from a, one opinion from a counselor's perspective or the administrative side, please ask.
I know it's time to wrap up, but I just wanted to share something with you as you think about whether or not mentoring is for you. Like Tom said, in 30 minutes, once a week throughout this whole year. And if you build relationships with a kid, you want to continue the following year, we will work to facilitate and reconnect you when school starts. All of the things Tom said is true about mentoring and helping her people up. But we're looking to do something a little bit different this year too that Tom doesn't even know about. It's not launched. I mean, even though Sarah knows about it. But we have an attendance action team in the district. You guys know COVID has stayed with us the last two years. Kids weren't coming to school, right? And there was a lot of ratings given by the state. The truancy officers were not out knocking on doors the way that it used to be to make sure kids were coming to school. And even parents who were really engaged, who were maybe working at home, going, "You know what? Kids don't need to be in school on Friday. We're going to do a beach house for them again and take them out of school." But we know that all of those things are not really good for kids. They learn best from learning in school. So, that attendance action team has been talking about ways to get kids re-engaged in school to get them to want to show up, even if they don't have parents that encourage them to show up. We need adults who are there for them, who encourage them to come to school and participate and engage. And so, the attendance action team is looking at what a mentor can be to some of those students as well. And I can tell you that they're all ages and a lot of them, we've got some kids that are early to swap out. We don't want them re-engaged and get them caught up on credits. And so, think about that too. We are very much in planning stages. We have a meeting next week. And so think about that too. We are very much in the planning stages. We have a meeting next week. But we're looking to identify those students that really need somebody to show up for them, say school's important. And remind them to be there and give them some of the support too. So if you're interested, like Tom said, go to the website, get registered, make sure that you can be the mentor. We're not going to follow up with you the mentor. You don't check that box to see who you want to mentor. So please do that. And then in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be sending out follow-up communications. We have, y'all, fill out our bio that helps them get to know who you are. So the counselors like Clara are trying to figure out who's the best mentors of parents to. They've got valuable resources to go to. You know what? This looks like a good match. Let's put these both together. So the more information you give us, the more impactful these characters can be. So thank you for your support. And even if you're not interested in mentoring, you can't leave that. We've been given tons of opportunity. Check out the website.
Thank you, Melinda. You know what, I.
And Melissa said. I've been saying and asking the question around the city, how are the children? Are all the children well? And we know that not all of our children are well. They need us. So if you have time. I would encourage you. Give some of that to these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, everybody. And, uh, work again. If you have additional questions or anything. Uh, past District Governor Gene Dalloword put in the chat, and I think this is a wonderful thing to share with the room. What we do know is that all kids respond to love and care, leading to a pot, potential of a positive mental health for the rest of their life. Not all kids have a loving and caring environment surrounding them and a mentor can make a huge difference. So. Thank you, Past District Governor Gene on Zoom. We appreciate your words of encouragement. And keeping with tradition and history, Tom, I am pleased to. Ask you to sign and make a drop a note of encouragement into our book of the day. Um, it is fall winter according to Humphrey. It's a chapter. Uh, it's got a cute little hamster and snowman on it. So if you could please. Take that to your table and write us a note and we will get that delivered to Pearl in your arms. So thank you again. All right. So just a quick reminder, love social today. Look, I got the time right on the calendar. Good job, Kat. Five o'clock at Hardtells. We'll go back one more. There we go. Uh, tomorrow is a very busy rotary weekend for the district. We've got a membership seminar along with the foundation seminar. You can still sign up for that. You can come in person to the library where you can also do it via Zoom. Two ways to play. Uh, next week, uh, we've got our Field of Honor meeting. I know it says Mels. Uh, we, we got a change on that. Uh, we just need to get the deck updated. Wait. VFW, so head on over to the VFW next Tuesday morning. Michelle, you got that in your notes? She's going to email us all out as soon as we get done. So VFW and then we'll be back at Bollarama moving forward. We've got a great couple of programs coming up and then just take special cue to the poker tournament on September fourth. Okay. Jim, you had a quick announcement for the good rotary, I believe?
Very quick, very quick. A lot of good, uh, feedback on our, uh, program last week with the. Uh, Imam from the Islamic Center of, uh, Cedar Park. And they have invited us to come back and visit them, uh, at two o'clock next Friday afternoon and we would be done by three o'clock. And if anybody is interested in learning more about Islam, um, let me, uh, talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you. All right. Michelle let me know she was tied up today, but she sends her love. I'll go ahead and do the moment of peace. The most valuable possession you can own is an open heart. The most powerful weapon you can be is an instrument of peace. Carlos Santana. Wonderful. Thank you for that. All right. And if you guys would please go ahead and go to the next one. Ken, join me of the things we think, say or do. First. Second. Third. Fourth. And number five. We are adjourned. Bye, everybody. Have a great weekend. If you're interested in service, head to the back table.